Oh, you got the handouts, okay. Take them down.
I do. Susan, there you go. All right, so, over the last few months, we've had some speakers from the public come up and express concern about our book review, material review committee. That's the lack of meeting, the dragging of feet. We had to go through, we had to change in personnel, so it took some time. And we hear you, and we need to streamline some things, in my opinion. And since this process has been started, the state has produced a list of books and materials that have already gone through an informal and a formal process. So I asked some of our staff, and Ms. Harris had indicated we would probably go through 15 to 19 books per year. So it would go a little bit slow. If you're not familiar with the list from the DOE, we have about 298 books that's on that list currently that's already gone through that process. So if you do the math, we're a little bit shy of 15 years to go through the books that have already been gone through. And frankly, I don't think our kids should be sitting around and waiting for that, and parents that have been asking for that. So, I have picked up the phone, I have talked to board members in other counties that have gone through the process. So what I'm asking now, and I move to make a motion, I move the board to accept the state's list of district removed books for 2022-23 for removal of BPS libraries. Except books that are currently part of an AP curriculum shall be removed from general access in the library and placed so that they are only accessible to students in those AP classes as part of their curriculum. Furthermore, and those books that are on the list that are not in our libraries currently, that they are added to a do not purchase list.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I believe that this needs to start as a discussion. It's not been put on our agenda. The board hasn't had time to look over the materials and have those conversations that you've obviously had with people. So this is usually a type of item that we would bring up at discussion at the end. Hey, Board, this is what I'd like us to do. Let's give some consensus, either consensus direction to the superintendent, or let's bring it forward as a motion. Because at this point, especially right now where we are in our meeting, we haven't had a chance to have public comment on this decision, on the list, on any of those things. So just as a matter of procedure, I think we're out of order. And, you know, we certainly, you know, could take this under consideration, but I don't think this is the time to, or the proper process to move this forward at this time.
Mr. Gibbs, there is a motion on the table right now, correct?
Yeah, he's moved to have that. There's no second. And you've got a question on the procedure. The public's had sufficient time to comment on book removals, and all he's doing is moving book removals up. So I believe procedurally, it can be done legally, since the public has had an opportunity to comment on many of these books that are on the list, maybe not all of them, but they've certainly had time to comment to the board on their viewpoints.
All right, so there's a motion. We need a second in order for it to come to a vote.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
Yeah, for discussion.
All right, who wants to open up the discussion on this?
Well, I will, since it was questions. And in timing, may not be perfect, but I always believe there's never a wrong time to do the right thing. And we need to get going. We need to streamline the process. We need to move on, so this committee that we have in place can pick up at ground zero. And these books have already been looked at, and that's where I stand. We need to move forward. We owe it to the public.
I'm happy to jump back in there. So here, and I, without, no, I mean, this is a list of books and what counties that they've been removed. What it doesn't say is why they were removed. It also doesn't say if they were removed only from certain grade levels. So I don't, without that information, you know, maybe they were just removed from elementaries, but not secondaries. Your motion is pretty broad. And I am, you know, Mr. Trent, I have spoken on this issue, and you have applauded the way I've said it. So you know where I come from. But I, to do a blanket, I mean, you guys can see from the list, if you already weren't aware, Clay County did a broad sweep without really taking a look. And I think, you know, I understand the delay. Honestly, I was very frustrated. The majority of the board didn't want to move forward with my idea, which was to start a second committee. And maybe because you had this in mind, I don't know. Because at least a second committee would get us going further. But to make this decision, some of these don't even apply to us because we don't even have these books, right? So some of these, you know, if the story that's going to come out later is, you know, Katie Campbell was okay with X book on this list, saying, no, it's not there. It's already been removed. It's already in the process. What Katie Campbell has a problem with is taking a blanket thing that I haven't had a chance to look at, and I don't really know what the reasons were that they were removed, or what grade levels they were removed from. I just can't go with another, I don't want to cede my authority as a board member to another county, because the state list was just for all school boards to report, so the schools to report any books that were removed. It's just a generic list, and it could be for any reason or any grade ban. They were supposed to report it. What we do with it is our own, and we could make that decision. But I don't want to give my authority away to these other counties when I have no idea with the reasoning behind their decision.
All right, discussion to continue. Audience, I'll remind you that your time for public comment. Yep. That's, okay, moving on. Anybody else would like to speak?
Yeah, the irony of people who are so hungry for positions of power to relinquish that power to random counties that they have nothing to do with is not lost on me. So, you know, a man of not so many words came here today with a prepared speech to ban 298 books without taking the time to see if there are books that are actually within our county. So I'm with Ms. Campbell on that one. So just quick skimming, since I didn't have time to go through this. The Little Rock Nine. Hmm, okay, sure. That must be like super offensive. I, like, I don't even want to waste my breath on this argument, because, you know, listen, when you lay in the mud, you're going to come up dirty. And Anne Frank's Diary.
That's the graphic novel.
Yep, it's Anne Frank. So, yep. Sorry that it's graphic. Sorry the Holocaust was graphic. Listen, I do, I would love to take like an hour of everyone's time and just read this list, but...
It's public now.
Well, it's public now, because you didn't present it to the board ahead of time. Yeah, point of order, Mr. Trent. Thanks. Ooh, this is going to be fun to watch afterwards. I love this. This is great. I also love that you did this in a room full of educators. I bet they respect that move, and parents, and people who support public education. Whew, job well done. Job well done.
All right, Mr. Susan.
Yeah, I would, I think the issue that you have is, is that, you're right, that these are not ones that we've actually gone through. Our public hasn't been able to speak to and everything like that. But we do have Brevard's that, when I was chair, I looked through, right? And there are some of these that are on there. That may be the piece that we can do to speed it up. Meaning that the ones that are on Brevard, the list that we have in Brevard that are also on this, would be the one that the public has had an opportunity to speak to, is on a list that is approved, so that it could speed up the process, and we could go that route. That I would like to offer up as an amendment to, because I think that one of the questions is, is that I haven't had a chance to, and I apologize, like, I went through and read and deep dove the other ones that are a part of Brevard. I did. I made sure of that, because I didn't know if, remember, I was given the opportunity to walk through, and there's some pretty repulsive stuff, right? So I would say that with that, in that regard, I would like to say that if they are on this list, that they could, that gives us the opportunity to speed the process up. I have no doubt in my mind that if you look at those other books, that those would be the opportunity to be taken care of, and it's not, it's one that our public has had an opportunity to speak on. So I'd like to amend it, amend the motion to not include all 293, because there are, there is some concern over, I haven't had a chance to look at them, but that may not fly.
Mr. Trent would need to amend the motion, correct, Paul, or no?
Matt can put forth, or Mr. Susan can put forward to the motion. It has to be seconded and approved before it gets voted on.
All right, so your amendment to the motion is to...
Just do the Brevard ones that are on this list.
That are currently in the formal review process.
And I have not had a chance to cross it yet, but I will tell you, there was no, the only ones that were, all of the ones that are on the list, I have extreme concern with already, and I have a feeling that they're going to get taken over. And if you guys remember, we had a conversation about this earlier, and we've gone through a process where our book committee people are being attacked on both sides. The process is taking so long to go through, and it's become something that was not meant to be. And we've been expressed by people saying that we're slowing the process down and everything else. This is an opportunity to do that, so that's all.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the list to reflect the books that are on the formal challenge.
That's it, just for Brevard, just for Brevard. Not the whole state. I don't, I don't think that that would be the right cause.
So to clarify, your motion is to amend Mr. Trent's motion to only remove books that have been challenged in Brevard?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
I will tell you that I have friends, I know Clay is all over here, and so I was actually with one of my friends that's on the school board at Clay County. Sorry about that, turned my gun. I was at an event and spoke to one of the school board members that's on Clay County's board there, and they have an individual in Clay that has dedicated, I don't know how many hours, to coming and reading publicly, which it's all out there. You guys can go and watch the videos of these books. And so they all have failed the state statute test, the ones that are on here for Clay. I don't know that we have all these in here, and I tend to kind of lean with you, Ms. Campbell, on, I don't want to give up, we don't even know if we have these books. So for us to say, hey, we don't want these books in our school, I don't know that they're there. So I, I'm in favor of moving forward. I guess let's go to a vote on Mr. Susan's amendment at this point. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So that passes four one.
For the amendment.
For the amendment.
So now the motion is the amended motion.
Okay, so can we clarify, so, and I may need you to state this again, Mr. Trent. So you want to take, now amended, any book that's on this list that is also on our challenge list, and put it in a, not remove it completely, but...
No, that was just the AP. That was the AP.
Okay, so go back and say your motion again, please. So it's clear, because I'm...
So it was the state list.
Yeah, thank you.
So it was the board to accept the state's list, remove books for 2023 out of our libraries, except for any book that is currently in an AP curriculum, and then we would just remove those, so the only ones that could have access to that are...
AP reading lists, because AP reading lists, okay.
Correct. Because we're in the middle of the year, and those have been submitted before the year started.
Right. So just to clarify, any book that is on our list, that's not on this list, will continue through the challenge process?
Yes.
Well, they haven't been, to clarify that, they're not in the challenge process. So we're talking about the, they're on the formal challenge process. So the books that are on here that are not in the challenge process wouldn't come to us unless they were challenged, right?
Right, no, I'm saying the books that are in our challenge process that aren't on this list, like the toddler Bible and a couple of other things. They will still remain in the process. I still think this is, I'll be voting no, because I still want us to hold on to our control of this process. And it does mean that a lot of these books are going to be, end up being gone, hope, you know, some of them, hopefully, just to be quite honest, because there's still a lot of stuff that I absolutely think, and I haven't changed my position on this, this is not a new position, of the body parts and the things that the body parts are doing in a, as if it's supposed to be, it's, you know, junior high, high school erotica, that's different from, you know, some of the other things. So I don't want to give that, but I just don't want to give authority away. So I will be voting no, but I wanted to clarify, let me finish, but I wanted just to clarify. And I do appreciate the motion, Mr. Susan, of, you know, at least narrowing it down, because I don't want to do what Clay's doing, I don't want to do what Martin's doing, I want to do what Brevard's doing. And we're actually voting on the policy that's revised tonight, and we've worked really hard on it. And I have to bring back to the board's attention that part of the delay was this board's delay in changing this policy several times this year.
Ms. Campbell, I did want to just clarify, and if you can, that the only books that we're talking about are the ones that are on our list that cross to this list. And it's going to be a serious, because you kept, okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yep. I still want us to go through our process and not take somebody else's...
And Ms. Campbell, I would agree with you 100%, and I, to be honest with you, that would be appropriate. The problem is, is that we have people that are getting attacked at their place of businesses and losing their jobs based on, and everything else.
That is, the committee is going to do what the committee does, and what happens with people behaving badly, and I've seen it, I've seen it, Mr. Susan, I've seen it. And honestly, the public needs to, in that case, grow up and tackle issues like grownups do it. Not on social media, not doxing people. We are adults, Brevard, on both sides. I've seen the most ridiculous behavior, and sorry for emotional, but we just handle, and this, our policy is the way we handle this as adults. That's the way we handle this as a board, and it is frustrating both sides. So I understand you, Mr. Susan, and I hate it. That was one of the reasons why I could support our decision when we revised the policy, to make the decision come back to the board, so they're not sitting there listening to people threaten them, and not actually talking about the book, but talking about how they think they're doing some things are wrong. I get that, I'm with you. But back to this, that's not a reason why to make this decision.
Okay. If you would like to go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Right. I appreciate the Brevard issue on that. I just want to make it very clear, you know, that those list of books, for those that are out there and they're listening to this, is on the Department of Education's website. Please go, we have a few extra copies up here. I want to say that we've tried, and when I say it's going to take 15 years to get some of these books out from in front of our children, we had an opportunity. We tried. I'll try again. And every time it gets voted down, the ones up here that are voting no are voting for keeping those in front of our children, so...
That is not, audience, that is not true, Mr. Susan. That's not true, Mr. Trent. Those books that have been challenged in Brevard are not on the shelves right now. They're pulled back awaiting, they're sitting, they're in, they're being pulled back to the district. They're not even in the schools. They've been removed from the schools, awaiting the process. So the delay is to get them back on if they are allowed on. So that is a lie, and I don't appreciate you saying that, because I will still be voting no. We're not putting those books back in the schools. They are sitting off the shelves, awaiting the decision by the committee. Speak the truth.
All right, moving forward, Mr. Trent, can I have a moment to speak, please? Moving forward, we need to continue with this motion, and honestly, here is, here's where I'm at with this, and where I'm going to land on this. The idea that it's going to take 15 years, and they're already removed, and it's going to take an exorbitant amount of work from our staff, while at the rate that we're going, it may take 25 years, I don't know. Honestly, so, I mean, honestly. So, with that being said, I think it is a fair request to say, hey, these books have been through the informal, they have made it to the formal, they have cited the literature that's in, that violates the law, and now they're on the formal list. So inevitably, what we're saying is, they're not going to pass the state statute, right? That is what we're saying when we go to the formal. I mean, it really is. You have to be able to warrant why we're going to the formal, and when they cite the text in there, you can't just say, oh, it says that it shows a body part. That's not, have you read them?
But that's not the way our policy works, because, I'm just going to play the other side. The gentleman who put in there the children's story bible, he brought it to a formal because he requested it. We don't, he doesn't have to prove that it is. He said, I think this violates this, and this, and this, but he doesn't have to prove it. The committee will process that. So just because it's on our formal list doesn't mean it actually violates statute in whatever conservative or liberal view people have of that statute. It just means that somebody wanted to take it to the next level, because they weren't happy with the informal. So we do, I'm reminding you of our policy, formal and current, because I know it's been a couple of times we've revised it. But the informal process, they bring it to the school level, the school says, everybody who has that book, the media specialists and the principals decide, do we want to hold on to this book? Are we listening to the formal review? And then we go back, and some of those books have been gone through the formal review, because the media specialist decided, you know what, for whatever reason, no, we don't want this in our libraries. Then they go back to the person. If the person says, okay, we still have this book in this library, this library, this library, and they want to do a formal challenge, just because they want to, now it's on the formal challenge book list, and it's waiting the process. And at that point, all those books get pulled off the shelf. So those two children's story bibles that were on there, they've been pulled off the shelves, because that's our, that's our policy. So it doesn't mean, if it's on the formal process, that we can prove that it has those things. It just means that the person didn't accept the informal process, and they wanted to continue to challenge it.
So with that being said, with that being said, yeah, I really wish you guys would stop, because you're just hindering governance at this point. And so really, I mean, to let us have this conversation and let it organically develop the way that it's going to, please. I, with that being said, the alternative is this, and this is what the reality of what we're going to see happen is, is that everyone's going to come forward and read the books. And part of me is okay with that, and I'll tell you why. Because I think the community needs to fully understand what is in these books, because everyone says you're banning books. But let's hear it, let's hear it, and let's say, yes, that, we agree, that should be in the hands of a child. And so to me, I tend to agree with, we have a process in place. I like our process. Our process removes those books from the access of children. If the community wants to circumvent us, they can, let's be real, they can. They can circumvent the process. I don't, I don't, it is what it is. But I don't, I can't agree with this whole list, there's no way. And having heard Ms. Campbell and what she's saying on this formal, I again want to say we need to go back to policymaking on this. I think we're going to have to touch this thing probably every six months, unfortunately, maybe every 60 days with this policy. Because to make it to a formal should warrant something in it other than, I don't like your decision. So for me, I guess we'll go ahead and, let's vote on the motion that's at hand right now.
I have something to say.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Jenkins.
I mean, like, seriously, you guys have pushed me to this point. You guys appointed an administrator who made a racist comment tonight, and you're scared of books for our children. That was your first motion as a vice chair, books. If you really care about keeping our children safe, you would worry about many other things than books.
Okay, back to the motion at hand. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Nay, it fails. Three to two.
Two, three.
All right, I'm going to go into, and call for a short recess before we go into public comment.
And the message is never, go become somebody and come back and help your community. And I think we forget that sometimes. We're trying to push people, but there's something to be said about coming back to your community and doing God's work. And that's exactly what you're doing. And the issue is, is that we tell everybody, go, go, go. You're a perfect example, and Ms. Campbell said it just perfectly. Not only are you coming back selflessly to give yourself to the community that you grew up in and what you're doing, but the other issue is, is that you're setting an example for other children to follow. And as somebody who loves public service, works hard in that realm, you set that example, man. And if there's anything I can do from the bottom of my heart, I'm there for you. I'm so proud that we're able to do this. Keep it up. Anything you ever need, let us know. You want to name, keep coming in here and making us feel good, we'll rename that damn track after you every year. You know what I mean? So, but with that, thank you so much, sir. I truly appreciate you. That's all I got to say.
That's a lot. It took every word that I was going to say.
Did you say it again?
What we just are about to do up here is the easy thing, is to recognize somebody in your position, the difficult thing is to do what you've been doing. And again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for being that example for, not only everyone in Cocoa and around you, but everyone in the county. I mean, we're very proud of what you've done and what you continue to do. So again, if you need anything from us, you know where we're at. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes. I want to thank you as well. There are 17 pages of signatures that are, what is this, like, eight font? I mean, it's single spaced, it is a ton of support for the renaming. I got a message from Mayor Blake, who was a former teacher of mine, today, just with contagious joy in his voice over, this is the right thing to do. This man has given 15,000 hours, is what he said. Now, I'm hearing it's a little higher, but 15,000 hours, if you put in 40 hours a week, that's 375 weeks. I'm like, where do you sleep or do anything else? This is just, I mean, talk about service. So thank you, thank you, thank you so much for investing in your community. Honestly, it signifies what community should look like. I wish we could replicate you and make just a bunch of you. So thank you for all that you're doing, and you have our full support. We're very, very excited.
All right. And so we need to, all right, so we need to vote on the motion, because I think we all know where this is going. But all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes five zero. Congratulations. Yeah. Best day of your standing ovation. Do you want to get a photo?
She's going to speak, come on up. Come on, man. I'm talking about you.
Yes, okay.
Man, I got something here I'm supposed to read off of, but man, that's all I have to do right now. You know, pretty much, you know, when you celebrate someone by adding, attaching their name to a track and field venue at a high school you graduated from, man, that's real. That's, man. And for, I emphasize the word living, because from the word living legacy, is because usually when you have your name attached to something, you are no longer with us. That's been the norm in the past. And so for me to be here, standing in front of you guys, and have my name attached to a venue, my high school, I'm a father, man, that's a beautiful thing. You know, all of this would not be possible without my loving parents, Mr. Willie and Ms. Elizabeth Folsen over there. I was the middle child. So five boys, so they thought I was going to be the girl. And, you know, I was outgoing, competitive at all times, you know, so football was me pretty much in my nature, from doing backflip flips off the roof of a house. I don't think they knew that. You know, when you go through adversity at a young age, some of these things become second nature for me. Hit by a car at age nine, and all my friends could say, oh, it was James, you put a dent in the car. Ran over by a motorcycle the year after. So you're talking about facing adversity as a young kid, man, and then the following year go out and play football, and football was just my sanctuary. So with that being said, you know, I also want to thank Ms. Kimberly Stark, co-stark in his own life, for actually giving me a phone call and asking me that I want to come out to Koko High and help with the track team. And I was like, no, I let the coaches coach. And so she said, no, we really need you. And from there forward, I have a look back. I want to thank Coach Bud Williams, Coach Danielle O'Reilly, Coach Charles Stark, I mean, all those guys accepted me with open arms or what have you, you know, some of the, with some of the training regimens, five, six o'clock AM sessions on school days, six AM sessions on weekends or what have you. They all had the opportunity to understand that I had a visual, and, you know, you get out of it what you put into it. So if you want proper end result, you got to get, you got to do what you're supposed to do at the beginning of it. I want to thank my brother, I got my brother, Derek Folsen over there. He's one of the, one of my brothers who also went off to college, I mean, three national championships at Life University. So we come from an athletic family, we stay competitive year round, and for a kid to win three national championships on a basketball court at a university, man, that's kind of rare. So we have good genetics, I'm not sure it's from my mom's side or my dad's side. I wanna thank, uh, Coach Derek Humphrey for taking me to a, um, to a, 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 a camp during the summertime at Appalachian State University. And when I went to that camp, man, the light bulb came on. And, uh, I'm gonna fast forward, of course, I went to Northeast Louisiana University, um, graduated, uh, nineteen ninety-four draft, um, was fortunate enough, um, to be in a veteran locker room, uh, with guys that talked about when you hang up the cleats. And man, I'm, I'm sure they're very proud of me that I took every word in that they said and I, and brought, came back home and exemplified it. Because with the resources that, uh, with, with my experience, uh, uh, we didn't have these type of resources when I was growing up. Um, so you know, uh, we played football on the street or tackling the grass, and if you from out of town, you better hurry up and get on the grass, because we bring you down on the, on the road or what. Um, so with that being said, um, I had the opportunity to have my, four of my kids come through Cocoa High School, and they all ran track. Um, they all went off to college on a full athletic scholarship. We're talking about one point one million dollar free athletic scholarship money that, that I didn't have to pay for. We all know how that goes. And so, um, in two thousand and eighteen, I went on a recruiting trip with my youngest daughter to LSU. And, um, the, the head coach for LSU, he knew, I mean, he did his homework on me as a former player, and I only did my homework on him as a coach, a track and field coach. Um, so we got to talking. I did not know that he played college football as a defensive back. He was an actual football guy. And he's now inducted into the US ATF Hall of Fame. Um, he actually coached at, uh, Hurstson Junior College as a defensive back coach before he decided to transfer over to be a, um, track and field coach. So I made sure I picked his brain. And, um, and I, I mentioned it to him, I said, you know what, I didn't know that. He said, you know what, um, a lot, he said, there's a lot of other coaches that have a football background that are not track and field coaches. So we can't put on a helmet, we can't, I played linebacker position, so we seek and destroy. So you can't put on a helmet and seek and destroy anymore. If you do something like that, you're going to jail. So you know how that goes. And so, so he and I, we, we talked, we talked, and, and you know, he was, I told him what I, what I have been doing, and so I picked his brain and then, you know, with the information. So I guess I'm giving away what type, what philosopher I actually use at Cocoa High, I'm actually using Dennis Shaver's, um, philosophy from LSU with the track and field athletes. Um, over the years, we have multiple All-Americans. Um, and so those All-Americans, um, if they complete eighty-five percent of the training, there's a one hundred percent college acceptance rate at Cocoa High. So that's what's very rare. I mean, and I mention that to the parents all the time, but of course, you gotta get the kids to come over. But eighty-five percent, complete eighty-five percent of the training regimen, that's one hundred percent college acceptance rate. Um, again, I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Nancy Wright, my cousin, Christie as well, I mean, they, you're talking about troops on the ground, they were troops on the ground getting these signatures done. I mean, we're talking about thousands of signatures, man, they, they did a whole lot. Um, um, got my son, I got, uh, T. Swab, I got, um, uh, we got, uh, Squirrel, Jamelle Jackson, those guys, um, I had a chance to work with as athletes, uh, whether it be football, Squirrel and James Junior, of course, they were, um, on the track team. And those guys went off to, um, to play college ball. We got two ACC guys, and we got one guy played for a national championship, um, at Universal West Florida. So those guys are here because we're talking about, they graduated, what, nine, ten years ago? And so they respect what I've done in the past, and I keep it, uh, one hundred with them, that's, you know, keep it one hundred with them, and I don't sugarcoat with it, with them. And I let them know where, where all the traps at. And so if you're a good person and, and, and you're all, you're around good people or what have you, good things, uh, will come out of it. And again, before I finish this up, again, I wanna thank, um, uh, my principal, Ms. Denise Stewart, uh, for being all in with this. I wanna, my, my cousin over there, Ms. Ylana, she's over there, raise your hand. I wanna thank, um, our, our former principal, Mr. Uh, Mr. Wilson. Um, he was, um, yeah. He was principal that one time when I was, um, I mean, helping the kids out. I know he used to come to work early in the morning, and I'm at the track, uh, six thirty in the morning, I know he was over there shaking his head, and I'm like, wha, wha, what is he doing? You know what I mean? I mean, I tell the kids all the time, I don't have a job, so I got nothing, I, I got time on my hands. And so all you guys gotta do is, um, be all in and show up, and I promise you, we'll get something out of it. And again, um, and also I wanna, uh, again, thank my parents. I'm tryin', I'm telling you guys, without them, man, it, it wouldn't be me. So they molded me to be a, um, competitive athlete, and at the, um, at the bottom line, it's all about trying to increase everybody's athleticism. So that's where track and field comes in, increasing athleticism. Thanks.
Congratulations. I think you wanna grab a picture, right? We're gonna, do you need a photo? Okay. Yeah. Mr. Folsen, can we have you guys come up? We're gonna take a photo, if that's okay, for the track renaming.
Also for our Vieira. Track. Do you want them together or separate?
Together. Okay.
We have a total number of speakers. We are right at thirty, but we've already had two, so we're twenty-eight. All right, therefore each speaker will get three minutes. Uh, please note that the time is per speaker. We have a clock on the front to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected, and your statement should be directed to the board chair. The chair, well, we actually changed that. You're allowed to address your comments to anybody, so it doesn't need to be just the board chair. All right, the chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Uh, should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. All right, so moving on. Our first speaker, uh, is Kathy West. So we have Kathy West, Anthony Calucci, and Vanessa Skipper. Is Kathy? All right.
Good evening, ma'am. How you guys doing today?
Doing.
My name is Kathy West, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the substitute teachers. When I found out that the school bus drivers were getting a raise, it made me excited, and I wanted to apply for a bus driver job. But I was like, no, that ain't gonna work either, 'cause the kids ain't gonna like that. So, with that being said, I am here to ask for a raise for our substitute teachers. In seventeen and a half years, we only got one raise, and I can't pay my bills. So, um, our schools are struggling with, uh, having enough teachers and enough subs, and this is the reason why I'm here tonight to ask for a raise for the subs and the office staff and, and all the support staff. Because this, you know, it's not gonna cut it. All right, um, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. All right. Up next is Anthony Calucci.
My name is Anthony Calucci, I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Uh, Ms. Wright, congratulations on your appointment to chair. Um, you certainly have your work cut out for you. Um, but on behalf of our teachers, I'm asking that you do everything possible to move this board to the center. These extreme positions on both sides do not represent our community. We need to move past the wedge issues and focus on other issues plaguing this district. With that said, we conducted our contract vote between October thirtieth and November ninth at nearly all our work sites. There were two thousand nine hundred one votes cast for the twenty-three, twenty-four collective bargaining agreement, of which two thousand eight hundred and seventeen were yes, and there were only eighty-four no votes. That is a ninety percent yes on this contract. I wanna thank the board and Dr. Rendell for this favorable contract. Um, we agreed to many things that are extremely beneficial for our teachers, including five additional days of paid parental leave, two additional days of paid bereavement leave, one flex day for religious holidays, an additional discretionary day, an increase in training pay rates, and the ability to transfer sites without bureaucratic interference. It must also be noted that our non-classroom teachers will finally receive planning time through daily office hours. Moreover, we've ensured that our students who, our teachers who teach students with disabilities will no longer waste valuable instructional time by limiting the time they spend on duties. I also think it's important for our community to know that we invested over four million dollars from the Millet referendum in our supplement schedule. Many of these positions are after-school activities and sports in which teachers were literally getting paid pennies an hour to sponsor. With this increase in pay, we're sure that all programs will be able to offer more robust school programs to our students. We're also pleased with the employer contribution increase to our health insurance and the raise of around fifteen hundred dollars. With that said, I need to address a couple items. First, our health insurance continues to be extremely problematic. The year-over-year rise in cost hinders all our employees' raises. All districts offer health insurance, not all districts experience the drag on their finances that we experience year-over-year due to health insurance. We need fresh eyes on this plan and new ideas. Secondly, I'm asking you that you start planning for next year's raise now. Per DOE statistics from last year, Brevard is trailing the state's average pay by two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. With the soaring cost of housing and homeowners insurance in Brevard, we must close that gap. Furthermore, with the number of vacancies in our district, we, we are in competition to bring teachers to our district and can't afford to trail in pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Next up, we have Vanessa Skipper, followed by Heather Peterson, Deborah Chrisifoli, and Jonathan Hilliard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Rendell, my name is Vanessa Skipper, I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. A question that I often get asked is if I miss being in the classroom. While some may call me crazy, and probably a little crazier after tonight, my answer is always unequivocally and resoundingly yes. I miss it desperately, I miss making connections with students, I miss watching their excitement when they exceed their own expectations. While on a recent school visit, I was asked this question by an administrator who had observed me while I was a classroom teacher. My reply was, as I've already said, yes. But then I paused and added, I don't think that I would be able to be as good of a teacher as I was. Without hesitating, the administrator replied, because of the supplemental material submission requirements? To that response, I answered yes. My philosophy in my classroom was to teach the students in front of me, not just my content. It's the idea that you should teach for thirty years, not the same year thirty times. Different classes needed different lessons, even if they had the same course code. Different students needed different materials that would help create the magical light bulb that we're always talking about. District curriculum materials were never enough to accomplish this, and I had the autonomy to pivot with students in my classrooms when necessary. Now our teachers are drowning in a supplemental material approval process that is a knee-jerk response to House Bill ten sixty-nine. In order to get supplemental materials approved, teachers must submit a form weeks in advance, sometimes to wait a month to have it approved, and the lesson where it was needed has long passed. This is not conducive to the real-time decision-making and pivoting that goes on in a highly effective classroom. I never hid what I was doing from my administration, but I had the autonomy to make decisions that were best for the students in front of me. Teachers don't have time to fill out a million supplemental material forms so that they can give students the scaffolds and interventions they need. And I assume that administrators don't have the time to vet a million supplemental material forms. Instead of simply focusing on educating our teachers and administrators on making sure that materials brought in are age and developmentally appropriate, we took a new law, overinterpreted it, put more on teachers' plates, and sucked the autonomy and joy out of our classrooms. Here are some quotes from teachers regarding this issue. "I do not have time in my contract hours to fill out that form for each individual paper I want to use. That is a total waste of my time, and I can barely get done what the district requires now without this added job." This may be what makes me finally walk away. I am feeling very defeated and frustrated. This is more than a state thing. We are submitting things that are age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate, and everything is getting rejected. I was going to go into drop, but I can't do this anymore. I can't meet my students' needs with these overbearing requirements. In a nutshell, we threw the baby out with the bathwater, and our students are the ones who are losing because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. All right, next speaker is Heather Peterson, Deborah Chrisifoli, and Jonathan Hilliard. Heather, sorry, we can't hear over the audience. Heather Peterson, she's not here? Okay, so Deborah, you are up next.
Sorry for the segue after the young lady that just spoke. Okay. So I rarely feel the need to speak during public comment, but tonight I believe it is important for you to be aware of a few issues. As we know, according to the HB ten sixty-nine, once a formal review of a book is submitted, it should be removed from schools within five days until the review process is complete. All of you have stated from the dais that the books on the formal review list are not in any of the Brevard schools, but according to your own media library database, twenty-eight out of the thirty-one books on the formal book review list are still present in Brevard schools. However, in weeks of researching, I didn't only use the library database. I wanted to be sure to have accurate information, so I had several high school students go into different high schools to double-check to see if these books are physically there. Luckily, they aren't. They were told by the media specialists that the books pulled, and they haven't had time to update the system. This is a major problem. Here are the facts. The physical books are not in two high schools, but what about the other schools? I didn't have the time to go look at eleven other schools, so I couldn't confirm. The ebooks and audiobooks on the review list are still available, and this needs to be addressed. The books that have been formally, formally removed from the schools do not show as available in the BPS media database. If the BPS media database isn't updated and accurate, it's going to cause a lot of misinformation in the community about which books are and are not available, which will create a lot of issues and unnecessary drama. We want parents to remain engaged, but things like this cause them to become frustrated and discouraged because they are being ran in circles to get the truth. It shouldn't be this difficult. There are only thirty-one books up for formal review, not hundreds. The ebooks and audiobooks need to be addressed and removed today. We ask that you please update the media database so there is accurate information moving forward. We appreciate all the time and dedication that you have shown regarding the removal of inappropriate pornographic content in our schools, and look forward to working together with each of you in serving all of our schools with excellence. And if I may, I would like to hand you a hard copy of what is currently in your database. Dr. Rendell, can I just hand it on the end of your desk there? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Jonathan Hilliard, Bernard Bryan, and then Kyle Savage.
Good evening, Madam Chair, congratulations. Vice Chair, congratulations on your appointment this evening. And board members, Dr. Rendell.
into different high schools to double-check to see if these books are physically there. Luckily, they aren't. They were told by the media specialists that the books pulled, and they haven't had time to update the system. This is a major problem. Here are the facts. The physical books are not in two high schools, but what about the other schools? I didn't have the time to go look at 11 other schools, so I couldn't confirm. The eBooks and audiobooks on the review list are still available, and this needs to be addressed. The books that have been formally removed from the schools do not show as available in the BPS media database. If the BPS media database isn't updated and accurate, it's going to cause a lot of misinformation in the community about which books are and are not available, which will create a lot of issues and unnecessary drama. We want parents to remain engaged, but things like this cause them to become frustrated and discouraged because they are being ran in circles to get the truth. It shouldn't be this difficult. There are only 31 books up for formal review, not hundreds. The eBooks and audiobooks need to be addressed and removed today. We ask that you please update the media database so there is accurate information moving forward. We appreciate all the time and dedication that you have shown regarding the removal of inappropriate pornographic content in our schools and look forward to working together with each of you in serving all of our schools with excellence. And if I may, I would like to hand you a hard copy of what is currently in your database. Dr. Rendell, can I just hand it on the end of your desk there? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Jonathan Hilliard, Bernard Bryan, and then Kyle Savage.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Congratulations, Vice Chair. Congratulations on your appointment this evening. And Board members, Dr. Rendell. My name is Jonathan Hilliard. I'm the second vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. When I was in the military, we used to have a thing called an AAR, which is an after-action report. We would use this as an opportunity to look at events, to, to do pluses and deltas with them, to see how we could improve and, and address and not make the same mistakes over. So I want to tell you a quick story about a 14-year veteran-experienced teacher. Loves their school, loves their kids, loves the community, loves the parents. Well, this teacher, October 10th, I, I attended a, a meeting with, with this person to address the needs of a child that was aggressive and violent in class towards administrators, the teachers, other students. They needed help. They needed a lot of, they needed support. At this meeting, the, the administrative team was in attendance, in addition to the, the staffing specialists. Promises were made. Five days later, this particular child had, had an, an event that led to a disruption of the class. Because of that, the teacher towed the, the teacher, the teacher towed the, the student, the teacher authority law, which is in the state constitution. That was never the intent. What it was, was to get support for this particular child. Well, when that review board came back, they explained, oh, why we denied this request. During that, that review, this teacher was told, and if you continue to want the child removed, we're gonna remove your IA, which was a, a total retaliation to the tao. We appealed to, to Dr. Rendell, the superintendent, and I really want to thank you for taking the time to meet with us. I noticed you made copious notes, and we felt heard. If I had to put a delta there, it would be that we, we didn't hear with the follow-up. So, fast forward to now, we've met with Ms. Dan Pierre, we, we've met with Dr. Rendell, we've met with Dr. Fontaine, Dr. Bias, Mr. Susan came to the school to, to actually see the, the, the teacher and the class. And of course, now, things are moving. But folks, we have to stop this, where we have to have a nuclear option, where I've got to meet with all of our heavy hitters to get our teachers' support, to get our babies' support. We have this mission up here, but we have to do better. We have to do better. We are losing teachers. That's the bottom line. We have to do better, folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for your service. All right. Mr. Bernard Bryan, Kyle Savage, and Sandra Sullivan.
Good evening. I'm kinda excited about being here today. My name is Bernard Bryan, and I represent the South Brevard branch of the NWCAP, as well as a concerned citizen of South Brevard. As you know, I mentor many boys, probably around 16 of them. And when I mentor them, I ask them, I perform a survey with them. I said, what do you need in order to be successful? And out of the top two or three, looking at the data, they all always said to me, Mr. Bryan, I want somebody to teach me how to read. I need someone to teach me how to do math. And my heart dropped, because I look at all the conversation that's being held up here, and I never, I've never heard a plan from, from you guys about what are we gonna do? But I gotta share with you, Ms. Harris has a great plan. Ms. Tara Harris, I've studied her plan. Her plan is very intensive, but she needs your support. She needs you to give her all the help that she needs. And you just heard a little while ago, you just lost 22 teachers last month. I need to see a plan, what are we gonna do to retain those teachers? Because guess what's happening? Those little boys are saying, teach me how to read. Teach me how to do math. So if you will consider that, I would love to see a plan toward that, so our kids can be effective as young men when they grow up. And then, secondly, I know Mr. Susan said, there's no plan for a guardian where teachers holding guns. But I want to tell you right now, a lot of my parents, a lot of my children are not in favor of that. It's been in the media that Brevard Public Schools is looking at arming teachers, and our parents do not support that. And then, thirdly, I want to share with you, I know you know what happened at Melbourne High School. It was a racist act that this young man had something written on his back, on his back of his shirt, and it was offensive. I hope Brevard Public Schools have in your disciplinary process spike out racial speech as well as racial action. And then what I just heard tonight, you just hired somebody that have a, that was propagating racial slurs. You gotta stand for, for the good of our kids. And I'm begging you, please, sir, please, ma'am, help support our children, because every student needs to be served with excellence. So if you will consider that, I would truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. All right. We have Kyle Savage, Sandra Sullivan, and Aiden Beard.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Rendell, members of the board. My name is Kyle Savage. I'm the treasurer of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I'd like to start by thanking Matt for the last year as chair. Thank you. It was a year, but we knew we had somebody up there that we could call. Ms. Wright, congratulations on being elected to board chair tonight. We are excited with you to make BPS the best place for students and teachers. I've truly enjoyed our work over the last year, and most people don't realize, we have very honest and open conversations. And we will never agree on everything, but I know you will hear our teachers, so thank you. If someone had asked me at the beginning of the school year, what does Dr. Rendell stand for, I would have told him, improving the job of our school-based employees. I sat in this room, I heard Dr. Rendell talk to a bunch of new teachers, and, and that was his mission charge. That was what he wanted. But I have to be honest, our teachers don't feel that right now. Our teachers, I gotta call it for what it is, our teachers, our members, don't feel anything has been removed from their plates, and they need stuff taken off their plates. I'm gonna share to you what a third-grade teacher told me she worries about every week. Forty-five minutes of iReady reading, forty-five minutes of iReady math, science Pender forty minutes a week, math fluency ten minutes a day on iReady. The district has four quarter tests, each for reading, each for math, five to 10 minutes every day in math standards mastery, iReady diagnostic twice a year, the state FAS test that was somehow supposed to be less standardized testing, three times a year. And then I'm gonna end with this. A teacher shared this with us recently. As a professional with 20 years of experience, why am I not allowed to use my professional judgment for what I know my kids need? Why is my undergrad degree in special education and my master's degree in reading education suddenly not valuable? Why are my 21 years of experience suddenly worthless? That's what I feel like. When I'm told I cannot use anything else to help my kids learn, I'm not allowed to use what I know works and what I know my kids need. We have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. All right. We have Sandra Sullivan, Aiden Beard, and Gregory Ross.
Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores. So, I thought it was pretty ironic, the comment of, if worried about safety, you should be worried more than books by Jennifer Jenkins, since she is the representative for the school dis, school area that I want to talk about. So, you're all probably very aware, in 2018, there was a lot of discussion about the cancers beachside. There are numerous articles in the newspaper, and it started with Dr. Julie Greenwald, an oncologist, who attended Satellite High School, who's had cancer several times, and at least 20 of her classmates also. We were very concerned about PFOS contamination, and additional information has come to light. So in 2021, a EPA vapor intrusion study was due out. It's taken two extra years to get a hold of that report. And in front of you, it shows one report by testing by Patrick Space Force Base next to the school with 400 parts per trillion. Of course, the, the levels now have been lowered down, it's much more cancerous than they, what they previously thought. This vapor intrusion study by EPA shows, as you'll see on that one page in the conclusions, an inhalation health hazard with breathing these. Now, I have tracked vapor intrusion in my community of this very mobile chemical, and I had 12 vapor intru, VOC monitors throughout the community, because PFOS has been found to be much more of a volatile organic. So what this means, what I have seen in my community, which I am even closer to Patrick, is that when conditions for vapor intrusion, for example, when the river is high like it is now, when the surface is high like it is now, or it rains, or the barometric pressure goes down, certain conditions trigger very high spikes in vapor intrusion. So it went to the limits of mic meters, which were 38,820 parts per billion. Anything over 300 long-term has been associated with cancer. What I'm asking you, in the interest of student safety, which is the number-one role of government, is to test the school's beachside, Sea Park Elementary, and, and Satellite High School in particular. And there are other areas potentially in the county that may need to be tested as well. But they were talking about students died, Satellite Beach wrote, Congressman Posey, that three students with DIPG, there are only like 350 cases in the nation per year. There were three in our community. I find it very, I just would like to do one sentence.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra. Sorry, your time is up. Appreciate you. All right. We are on to Mr. Aiden Beard, Gregory Ross, and James May. That's who's on deck. Mr. Aiden, you're good.
Hello. My name's Aiden Beard, and I'm gonna keep this pretty short. I'm a sophomore at Melbourne High School, and I would like to talk to you about my views on the expanding Guardian program. I understand there's a lot to take into consideration with this decision, but I would like to share some views from the student perspective. I wanted to start with a question for you guys. Why try to fix the problem with more of the problem? Trying to fix gun violence in schools, why do we think arming our staff with firearms will solve the problem? Why do we think by doing this is not a school, a place that was once seen as a safe place for those in need of it, it then becomes a war zone? I respect the Second Amendment and the ability to bear arms as much as everybody else. However, adding more firearms to a school campus will not make the students feel any safer. Rather, it will make, it will scare most of us even more. Being in high school, I've met people that have dealt with domestic violence and gun violence at home, and bringing more firearms into a place takes all of that safety away from them, taking once their safe and secure place. For students that suffer from forms of anxiety, this could become too much for these students to handle. So, I urge you to take, to talk to students and see how this decision would affect everyday life on campuses. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Aiden. All right. Mr. Gregory Ross, James May, and Damani Hozie.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment. I do have something I want to read here, but I, I just want to start out that, to the president of the BFT and your comment about coming to the middle, I agree with you totally. I, I would put that to this board. Drop the culture war, and, and a lot of this disappears. Stop the pretense of protecting students and get back to helping students. Now, Matt, I'm gonna talk to you specifically. I wanted to inquire how your campaign for reelection as District Four school board member was going. Feeling good about your chances? It appears you don't have anyone running against you since you filed in June of this year. So you got that going for you, right? I couldn't help but notice that you have collected over $30,000 in funds from the community to use in your school board campaign. That, of course, includes funds you've collected from the husband of the woman you just appointed to the book ban committee after you previously chosen member left due to the committee members who were unwilling to listen to one another and spoke to make themselves heard instead. But we will come back to that at a later date. Right now, let's stay focused on your campaign. You have collected over $30,000 in funds from the community and are promised to run for the school board, right? You would never collect those funds and then not actually use them for the reason you claimed, would you? Wouldn't you agree that doing so would be unethical? I don't suspect you will answer that question, so let me move on. I now want to ask you about the other funds you have collected. Well, let's say the Friends of Matt Susan Committee has collected. You know, the other 20 grand that the committee has collected in your name back in March of this year. Why would a surgeon give an additional 20K to your 30K you have already collected for a school board race in which you are unopposed? Why would the Ramba Consulting Group provide you funds as well? The same Ramba Consulting Group that is heavily invested in state legislature races and has a PAC that only provides funding and support for state legislature candidates? And why would the Friends of Matt Susan Committee give money to other state legislature campaigns like Nick Primrose for Florida House and Erica Booth for state representative? Interestingly enough, Erica Booth was just elected to the Orange County School Board in 2022 and is running for state house right now. Strange, right? Matt, why don't you come clean with the voters and the community and admit that you are not planning on running for school board District Four? Is it possible that you in actuality are planning on running for state house District 32, or even Senate District 19, when our local idiot finally gives up on his failing campaign? Just come clean, Matt. For once, while you're on the school board, speak some truth to power. Do the right thing. Thank you.
All right. James May, Damani Hozie, and Virginia Hamilton.
Just waiting for the clock to start. Hello. So my name's James May. I came to talk about something that apparently isn't on the agenda, but I figured I'd give my expertise while I'm here. So I was, I was in the Navy for the better part of a decade, a little under nine years. And one of the cool things that I got to do there was guard nuclear weapons. So, the security that, that you see around you isn't real security. Most of it is superficial, including at our schools. It makes us feel nice and warm and cozy and, and allows us to sleep at night and go about our day while our kids are at school. But the truth is, it, it doesn't really, anyone that wants to get in at school and, you know, shoot up a bunch of people, they're gonna do that, unless you have real security. And to be honest, you can't afford it. There's, you're, you're talking about just extensive armed people, like an entire police force just around every school. That's not gonna happen. What we do have currently, I think, is a decent program. You've got locked doors, no one gets in or out, you've got an officer, a trained individual who knows how to use weapons, like a gun, for instance. So at least it's safe. Allowing volunteers to, to just bring their gun, regardless of what they, what credentials they have, they're not professionals, and it's not adding to the actual security of the school. It's introducing another gun, which, regardless of who is holding it, is a dangerous instrument. So at least when it's being held by an officer, they're accountable to, you know, the, the school district, it's accountable to, to their department. But a volunteer with a, with a gun is just a really poor idea. I don't think, like, you're, you're just putting our, our, our children's lives in danger for no reason. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Thank you. All right. Damani Hozie, Virginia Hamilton, and Samantha Curvin.
Hi, I'm Virginia Hamilton.
I think you're, you're out of order. Sorry, the, the, Mr. Damani's behind you. Yeah, he's first.
My name is Damani Hozie. I'm father of three children in Brevard Public Schools. Mr. Susan says that the ideal of, of arming teachers is not up for discussion by the board, and I hope that's the case. I have my doubts. I have my doubts. Just in case, though, I'm going to give you my opinion on this preemptively. I believe that the arming of teachers with deadly weapons is wrong-headed. Teachers should be focused on teaching, not security or law enforcement. They should be focused on teaching. Even if teachers are equipped with extensive training, I'm not confident that these civilians can be trusted to secure a firearm in a classroom setting. The Giffords Law Center reports that nearly 100 publicly reported incidents of mishandled guns in schools by armed staff members have occurred over the past five years. Nationally, the vast majority of parents, teachers, and teenagers are opposed to arming educators. Implementing a policy so unpopular amongst educators may have a negative effect on recruitment at a time when we are struggling to find qualified teachers. In the vast majority of cases where potential mass shootings plots were foiled, it was not because of a gun battle with a teacher. They were prevented by alert peers, faculty, or family members who became aware of or reported an offender's violent intent. Lastly, we know that Brevard Public Schools has an equity problem. With persons of color often receive disproportionately harsh discipline for the same infractions as white students. This may be due to the fact that minority students are more likely perceived as being a threat. Having guns in the classroom when such a disparity exists could present a clear danger to Black and Latino students. To conclude, I want to keep children safe too, but I want their safety to be in the hands of professionals, not amateurs. Prevention should be our primary weapon against school violence. Putting guns in classrooms will not solve any problems, but will probably create new ones. Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, you're up now.
Okay, so I'm Virginia Hamilton. I've been a teacher for 31 years and retired last year and loving retirement. Got to try it sometime. You're discussing arming teachers and you're not discussing arming teachers, but the door was open, so here I am. A survey conducted this year found 54% of U.S. teachers think carrying firearms would make schools less safe. 20% believed carrying arms would make schools safer, and 26% had no opinion. I took a poll among our BPS teachers, and there are 97% voted saying they are not for guns. These are our own teachers. And I also researched BPS SRO stats. 80 hours of firearm training certified by the FDLE, 24 hours of tactical pistol training, 24 hours of training in active shooter scenarios, 16 hours in defensive tactics. Annually offering awareness, medical unarmed and deterrence training and firearms instruction. This is not enough, and it's not comparable to our SROs. And what about liability insurance, which is a nightmare to obtain for schools? Kansas allows school staff members to carry guns in the classroom when authorized and not writing. EMC Insurance Companies, which covers most Kansas school districts, denied coverage to armed staff. And what about the accidents with guns? A few examples in the last five years include a teacher's loaded gun falling from his waistband during a cartwheel, a teacher unintentionally fired a gun in class during a safety demonstration, a student found a gun and bullets inside an unattended purse, a director allowed to have a gun on school property left the room and gun unattended in a room with two first graders left. A gun brought to a middle school by a teacher was stolen by two students, a teacher left a gun on the back of a toilet where it was found by a group of students ages 6 to 8. Student found a high school teacher's loaded gun that was left in a laptop bag in a classroom, a teacher unintentionally fired a gun in class where one 17-year-old boy suffered moderate injuries when fragments from the bullet ricocheted off the ceiling and lodged into his neck. These incidents were just a few to make us rethink arming teachers, and I found many more. And just a reminder, in last year's teacher contract, Section 9, Miscellaneous Number 12, teachers shall not carry weapons of any kind, either lethal or non-lethal. Carrying weapons is an accident lawsuit waiting to happen. Just let teachers teach, period.
Thank you. All right. Samantha Curvin, Allison Curvin, and Rochelle Jolly.
Oh, wow, that was loud. Hello, good evening. Happy to see everyone's here and back. It's been a while. I haven't been here for quite a while, so that's fun. So, arming teachers. Actually, funny story. Our school has our own newspaper, and we're actually publishing a bit about this because it is interesting, to say the least, that this was even a consideration because of how dangerous and, in my opinion, idiotic it kind of is. Common sense kind of says that this is not a good idea, but it's not technically my decision. But I can still swear to you guys. So I would say, first, with arming teachers, the dangers, that is, think of the teachers' mentalities. The teachers' mentality, for the most part, they're working with kids. They want to work with children, to teach them, to guide them. They're going to put the newer generation before their own safety. Who says they're going to use that gun for themselves? They're going to try to protect the children by getting them out of there, not by using a gun. I can guarantee that. Two, who's paying for it? Because you're going to have to get military-grade training for this, if you think about it. Because not only do you have to teach the, like, obvious safeties of handling said weapon of any kind, you also have to teach disarming other people. Because who's to say that a student isn't going to overpower a teacher? Since we have seen in other counties, other states, that this has happened multiple times where a student has knocked teachers out unconscious. That's the word. Or have just straight-up overpowered them by a long shot. Who's to say someone isn't going to take a gun and then go berserk because they can? That needs to be taken into consideration. But honestly, that's kind of all I have to say. And good evening. Good luck with my sister. Bye.
Thank you. All right. Allison Curvin, you are up next. By Rochelle and Michelle, what does that say? Is it a U or an N or a K? Baronow. That's a U. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board. You already know who I am, so let's get to this. I watched the work session today, and I have a bone to pick with Ms. Campbell and Megan. When I think of a party, I think of a celebration. I think of having fun, hanging out with my friends, and eating junk food. Do you know what I don't think of? Book bannings. To be cheerful about removing pages from our textbooks on health and reproduction is shameful. It should not be referred to as a page-ripping party, as if they're the prize at the end. Do you know what students get when you deface our textbooks and restrict information from us? We get harmed. I don't care if this is coming from the state. They suck too, but you both suck worse for being happy about it. Staying with you, Megan, I listened to the last meeting when you spoke about adding more guns into our schools. How about no? You voted against mental health training for our elementary school teachers to help their students learn about self-regulation emotions. You spoke out against our drug diversion program because you don't know how platforms work. The district has put together a presentation on procurement, so maybe you'd get it today. Again, you make the dumb, well, yeah, you make the dumb statement that the BPS has plenty of cash because of property values, even though enrollment is dropping. If you want enrollment to continue to drop, then add more guns into our schools and waste more money that we don't have. Megan, I don't know why you hate the students of Brevard Public Schools, but you show over and over again that you do. And frankly, we're tired of it. Keep in mind, the students whose education you're harming now will be voting in 2026. I'm just saying.
We are on to Rochelle Jolly, Michelle Baronow, and Rebecca McAllanin.
Rochelle Jolly, parent of a child and currently attending Brevard Public Schools. I would like to start off by saying how embarrassing it is that you guys have elected Gene as vice chair, and he can't even substitute teach in a Brevard Public School because he's dishonest and lacks integrity, because he's lied on his application. Then, he has the audacity to suggest we streamline fascism by proposing we ban books without ever even reading them or knowing what books are on the list. This is embarrassing. Matt Susan has joined him in the No Integrity Club when he opened this meeting, citing that expanding the Guardian program hasn't been discussed when clearly Megan suggested it at the last meeting. And I quote, "By no means, when we say expand the Guardian program in Brevard County, doesn't mean a teacher must carry a firearm. It's 100% voluntary. They can choose to do so if they want to be a part of it," unquote. Mr. Rendell backed it up with his quote, "We have direction to explore and bring some information back to the board on the expansion of the program." Last board meeting, Megan claimed that school shootings is just the world we live in. You are not helpless and have a lot more power than the average citizen. Guns in school come from unsecured guns in homes where kids live. You can encourage parents to keep guns secured so that students don't have access to them. For the last several years, guns have been the leading killer of our children in America, more than car accidents, more than cancer. So I'm sure that you can understand the public's concern when this was mentioned at the last meeting. In recent years, fentanyl has become a killer of a lot of our children in America. Between July of 2019 and December of '21, 1,800 teenagers have died from a fentanyl overdose. Guess what no one is suggesting? More fentanyl in school. To suggest that more guns make us safer is a falsity that has been proven by extensive research over and over again. America has the most guns than any other country, also has the highest rate of gun deaths. Rather than having more guns, here are some things that might keep our kids safer. Increased mental health screenings and services. Florida also has a red flag law. Red flag laws empower family members and law enforcement to remove firearms from people who are behaving erratically and/or showing signs of violence toward them or someone else. Using these flag laws has and will prevent school shootings and has been used in other counties successfully. If you are interested, as you claim, in protecting our children, then use your resist to educate parents about the use of the law and keeping guns secured. Books have not killed a single child anywhere in the world. Not a single one. Books are not dangerous unless...
Okay.
Hello. My name's Michelle, and I'm the mother of a student in a Brevard County school. I also want to speak about the proposed potential Guardian program and why it's a horrible idea in addition to what you've already heard today. The one that strikes me most is the irony of it. You don't trust specially-trained media specialists, that's their title, media specialists, to make good decisions about bringing books into schools. What kind of training could these Guardian volunteers possibly receive that makes them more qualified to bring guns, weapons, into our schools? This honestly should be satire. It's ridiculous. Rather than an arms race, we need to make sure we put all of our effort into hardening the outsides of our schools. The school my child goes to only recently got a front door lock, okay, and a camera, allowing the receptionist to see who's at the door. This was recent. That's crazy. Why are we going to bring more guns in when anyone can stroll into the school whenever they want? There's a lot of things we can be doing that will be more effective and more safe than bringing extra guns. We don't need an arms race. And how many guns is enough, right? If the trained resource officer isn't enough, then bring in another one. But what do we need? Do we need 10? Do we need 30? Is there a percentage based on the head count in the schools? I don't know how many guns it will take to make it safe. I don't think there's an answer. I think it just makes it worse. And finally, if this is something that you persist in pursuing, and I understand you have to look at it, well, I don't actually, but I understand you probably are going to look at it, my proposal is that you test it here. If you think more guns makes you safer, then come up with your training, let everyone in this building go through it, let all the people who want to come in these meetings go through it, and if they qualify, let them enter this building with a gun. If you don't feel safe, knowing that all of your coworkers are packing heat, then they shouldn't be going in around our children in the schools. So put your money where your mouth is. If you're serious about this, I want to see it tested here first. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rebecca. After that, we have Julie Anton and Bonnie Harrington.
I spent some time today watching some previous workshops that I had missed because of some family situation. So I had a few things that were confusing to me, and then Mr. Trent's motion off the bat, out of order, also was kind of confusing. So I thought I would kind of shift gears a little tiny bit and read you some actual data about what happens when children read books. Lost in the political battle over educationally suitable books is what actually happens when young children read. One side assumes that students reading certain books will become traumatized, radicalized, or morally perverted, while the other argues for free speech and democracy. But neither side notes that most students, particularly teenagers, don't read much anyway. Neither offers evidence of what actually happens when students do read these disturbing books. So some psychologists, some professors of literacy actually studied this. Four eighth-grade English-language arts teachers, initially mostly concerned about their students' disinterest in reading, stopped assigning any particular book and instead gave students wide access to books written for young adults, let them choose what to read or not, and gave them time to read and openly discuss the books. They followed these students for two years, some of them all the way into high school. Over a four-year period, they conducted over 300 student interviews and spent many hours observing classroom interactions. The research represents thousands of encounters teenagers had with books they found most engaging, those that don't shy away from the complexities of being a human or the different ways of being human in a diverse society. And yes, books that shared qualities with those being challenged were banned in unprecedented numbers, 40% of the nation's numbers here in Brevard. Here's what they learned. Students, most of whom reported previously reading little or nothing, started reading like crazy in and out of school, and their reading achievement improved. Wow. While this was the initial motivation for teachers, it became the least interesting outcome. Students reported becoming more, becoming better people, a change that was noticed by their parents and their peers. They engaged in narratives about characters with complicated lives. They reported helping them be more empathetic, which we don't train, we don't encourage anymore, less judgmental, more likely to seek multiple viewpoints, morally stronger. Wow. And actually happier, yes, happier. They reported improved self-control and building more and more stronger friendships and family relationships. I would encourage you, when you talk about taking a random list from the state of Florida, which doesn't represent Brevard, and Clay County by any measure is not a beacon of education, that we should be trying to modulate. We should not be considering them. We need to consider actual data and what happens when children read difficult books. It does open the opportunity. They talk to their parents, they talk to their teachers, they talk to their peers. They become better humans because they're well-rounded and can understand, hey, I'm glad that's not my situation. What would I do in that situation? What will you do in this situation?
Ms. Julia.
Last week was Veterans Day, and we honor...
Last week was Veterans Day, and we honored our military. Next week is Thanksgiving. So I have a little tale for you that's about a heroic serviceman home from leave on Thanksgiving. This story is true, and you can Google it using the search terms "Galleria Mall Hoover, Alabama, Thanksgiving 2018," if you doubt me. Our hero was home on leave for Thanksgiving with his family. He went on an outing Thanksgiving night to catch those early Black Friday sales. While our hero was on this outing, he witnessed something horrible. He witnessed a bad guy with a gun. Now, our hero was a good guy. He too had a gun, and he had military training. So since the only way to stop a bad guy with a gun is supposedly a good guy with a gun, he pulled his weapon. Now that's when the cops arrived. The cops assessed the situation, and they took out the bad guy with the gun. Now immediately, the social media was flooded with photos of the dead guy. I know this because I was visiting in Hoover at the time. His carcass lying in a pool of his own blood, captions and comments celebrating his death. But wait a minute, friends and neighbors and school board, isn't this supposed to be a Thanksgiving story about our hero, the serviceman, home for Thanksgiving leave? Isn't that what we're supposed to be talking about? So why are we talking about the dead guy with his carcass in a school, in a pool of blood? Because, friends, neighbors, and board members, the dead guy was our hero. You see, in the movies, the good guys wear white hats, they sit on top of a white horse, they even have little white leather outfits with little white fringe. And the bad guy wears black, so you know who to root for. It's not that way in real life. The good guy with a gun and the bad guy with a gun look just the same. Just ask the cop who shot our hero.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Bonnie Harrington, Louisa Porter, and Julie Montion.
I'm a mom of two kids in Brevard Schools, and I wanted to speak to you today about arming teachers. I'm relieved that that wasn't a topic tonight, but I still feel compelled to share some information with you. I don't believe that this will work. The Journal for Adolescent Health in 2019 published a paper that said that robust public health research demonstrates armed teachers increase exposure to violence, not decrease it. A speaker before had mentioned the Gifford Law Center had said that nearly 100 publicly reported incidents of mishandled guns in U.S. schools in the last five years. A couple of highlights have been mentioned, but students being, a student being subdued by a resource officer grabbed a gun. A teacher unintentionally fired a gun during a safety demo, I think someone mentioned that. In Largo, Florida in 2018, I think it was mentioned too, a loaded gun fell from a teacher's waistband when they were doing a cartwheel, which really kind of highlights, you know, a teacher playing and doing a cartwheel, there's no place for a firearm there, it's dangerous. How many incidents weren't reported? It's an unpopular motion. There are seven out of 10 teens, seven out of 10 parents, and eight out of 10 teachers oppose arming teachers. We have a lot of things that are working. The things that have been shown to work are better threat assessments, better security in schools, planning in advance for emergencies, and establishing safe and equitable schools. Our teachers deserve our support to keep our schools safe, and introducing more firearms will not accomplish this. But before I get down, I want you to consider a specific kind of student that I think will be really impacted by guns in our schools, and this is a personal one for me as a mother. I want you to consider a student in a VEB class who has an IEP to support behaviors that they are unable to control. I want you to consider that our district serves a wide population of kids with varying abilities, and our school district is legally required to provide an education to all students, regardless, excuse me, of their ability or disability. I fear that neurodivergent kids, especially those who have some of the most extreme behaviors, will be at risk if there are guns in schools. And all kids deserve a safe school. So I hope that you will please consider some of the kids that have the behaviors that make them the most difficult to talk about and the most difficult to be compassionate towards, but they are children who are deserving of all of our love and support, and I hope you will remember them. Thank you.
Thank you, Louisa. All right. Ms. Julie?
That was Louisa. That just spoke. I'm Louisa.
Oh, sorry, you're Louisa. Sorry. Okay, I apologize. All right, go ahead.
All right. This will be my first public comment here. I'm sure I'll get the hang of it one day. I refuse to be a part of the silent majority any longer, and I trust others will follow suit soon enough. I'm new to Florida, but my daughter and my mother here in the front row, we lived in Mississippi for over a decade, so we've seen our share of fear mongering and shaming others. But it's truly something different here. I love living here. I will always love living here, but it's disturbing to see such a small biased group like Moms for Liberty be allowed to wield such a disproportionate amount of control over this board. What makes their taxes more valuable? What makes their ideas or their wants or needs more important? I don't get it. It's so bizarre. What I see is people making it their life's mission here to strip rights, limit access to books, censor voices, and spread fear and hate, further misguiding and denying this generation any safe space in this community. The Don't Say Gay bill in Florida, the book banning no-gun regulation, and this strange protect-the-kids language that they use to instill fear and put targets on our kids' backs. It's dangerous and deeply un-Christian. Young people deserve to see themselves reflected in this diverse community. They deserve our respect, not to be singled out and persecuted. In a new era of restricting ideas, teachers, and a time when book bans continue, I want to speak on behalf of the First Amendment rights of students and community members here to access all materials. There are resources already available for people who want to restrict their children from reading books. Controlling others is authoritarian and un-American. We deserve a compassionate board that gives everyone respect, not bring biases to the table. If you want to control institutions this month, this is what private schools are literally for. You have no right. You have competent families here in Brevard County, smart students that you don't give enough credit to, and busy teachers who need just your support. Help them, love them, support them. They need not added stress or restrictions forced upon them. You do see the big picture, right? Like, if not, there are books out there.
Ms. Julie Montion, then David Kearns, Paul Robb, Amy Robb.
Well, I am truly intimidated to... Hello? Yes. I am truly intimidated to follow some of my parents and colleagues because y'all are awesome and make me very happy I came tonight. I understand that not everyone was bitten by the reading bug. Many of you may not have stayed up all night with a flashlight under the bed when your parents are like, "Go to sleep." Or you actually missed a bus stop because you just couldn't stop reading a book. And I understand that for many of you, the passion that my friends and I feel towards book banning just is baffling and/or off-putting. But I promise you, for us who have loved reading and what reading has done for us, when you talk about banning a book, it feels like you're trying to ban part of our soul. It feels like you are taking things that have made us who we are, how we've been able to connect with people all over the world. By the way, I just also want to say, I was so inspired hearing all of you talk about the Veterans Day programs. I am fortunate that I've been able to do a lot with the VA and Mental Health Service, and guess what the VA is using is arts and literature? Because that is effective mental health. That's what mental health has been for thousands of years, is reading difficult stories. I'm not sure, I, this, I don't doubt your sincerity of wanting to protect children. I don't. Man back there? I don't. I do question your willingness to understand the role of literature. I wonder if you've looked at Aristotle and read what catharsis is. Catharsis is Greek for vomit up. The idea is that you watch a tragedy and you get so connected that when there's a climax, you vomit up your bad feelings. Aristotle says this is the purpose of literature, this is the purpose of tragedy. And yes, you can take paragraphs out of books and say, "Oh my God, it's so awful," but you're missing the entire point. You are, you're missing the best tool to teach empathy, to teach critical thinking, to have our students, by the way, be competitive on a global scale. I mean, our students aren't going to be able to have the references that the rest of the country has because they haven't been exposed to the books. What's going to happen to our property values? Do we want Clay County property values? I just, I, please, take a moment to think what literature is about. Thank you.
Mr. David Kearns, you're up next. Paul Robb and Amy Robb.
Good evening. I long for the days, as a newspaper reporter, when I heard Republicans vetch about unfunded mandates on city councils and school board meetings. When it came to the environment, they would always, they would freak out, you know, scrub jays and this and that. They would say, "This is an unfunded mandate. Send it back to the state. We can't..." And I wonder, this unfunded mandate of 1069, what it is actually doing in terms of cost, what this is costing the citizens of Brevard County. I understand that some books might have objectionable material, but you know, I, some of this stuff is ridiculous. I mean, Rachel Carson, I mean, we're going to ban that, I guess. We're going to ban Anne Frank, we're going to ban, I mean, it's ridiculous, beyond comprehension. I spoke to a teacher this past week. He reached out to me in a watering hole, he knows I can come here and speak. He said the movie Glory could not only get him fired if he ran it in the school, they would, his fear is that he would actually be charged with a federal crime. Now, this is outrageous, what's going on. He further says that so many teachers have been turned off by what's happening, that right now, there's maybe, he thinks there are 1,500 teachers that are, that are pretty much gone. And he says, "There's such a lack of substitutes that right now, they're just..." In the South County, I don't want to out him what school he's at, in the South County, they're just sending the kids to play basketball. They just send the kids down to play basketball, and it's so common, it's not even worthy of mention. He's ready to quit teaching. And on top of that, when you guys began talking about bringing guns into school, and you did, you absolutely did, he says, you know, I mean, this is ridiculous. So these circular logic things that we're seeing, we're seeing an AstroTurf group that came from this community, forced policy through Tallahassee, and then those policies, you guys are throwing your hands up, and they're not good policies. And you're saying, "We have to do this. Oh, we have to torture these students and the teachers this way, and we have to bleed our coffers dry complying with this ridiculous mandate." And it goes on and on. And now we're into the guns mandate, and you're going to use the same logic again. You're going to say, "Well, it's down from Tallahassee, they're telling us, we have to let the teachers come in." It's like you've never spent a day in the classroom. I had a, I had a kid with a box cutter he dropped in class when I was a substitute. That's all I could think about, is I had to put that box cutter in the desk, it was all day long. I'm worried about what's going to happen. A kid's going to come behind me and get that box cutter. Imagine guns. Valde, Texas, 400 guys with guns could not stop one guy with an AR-15. You and your teachers and your pop guns are not going to do a damn thing, okay?
All right. I read something today that struck a chord. It said propaganda doesn't have to stand up to scrutiny or be logical or consistent. It simply needs to be omnipresent and constantly reinforced. And yeah, it's ringing true today in a few ways, you know. We're going to protect the children, the children, the tiny little children from the pornographies, not the high school students from the high school books that maybe have some passages that not everyone's comfortable with. But let's yell that enough and people will believe it, or at least, you know, vote for you. But somewhat I heard tonight, Mr. Trent, talking about all the delays in the, somebody want to talk about all the delays in the book process, said you had to change personnel. No, you all chose to repeatedly. Two meetings with the original committee and two appointees were replaced for ideological reasons, for lack of a better term. The actual experts were removed from the committee for conflict of interest reasons. Although, now, there was one voluntary, the member with the most egregious actual conflict of interest moved away. Another member was chased away by all of the insane policies changes. He said that parents have been asking for, you know, the quicker removal of books. The parents that want the books gone can walk to their kid's library, those of them that actually have kids in the school, and say, "This list." Boom, my kid, no. That was confirmed by the experts before they were tossed out on the committee, by the way. No one is asking, no one is asking, "Hey, I'd like some other people to decide what my kid can't read." A lot of people want that job. I don't get it. I'm not arrogant enough to think that my comfort or my opinion should dictate the educational and intellectual lives of even my own kids, let alone someone else's. And you said, "There's never a wrong time to do the right thing," which is true in a bumper sticker-y kind of way, and true, but couldn't be less relevant to anything you were talking about. My God. And you said, Mr. Susan, I'm just kidding, we talked about that the public has had time to comment on this, and the public has had, to the degree that they know or believe that the list is that large, but the public has weighed in on it somewhat. There was a parent survey that suddenly became ignored when the actual results came in, and the, you know, well, we talked about the discipline part a lot, that's fun and sexy and tough to talk about, but the number two and number three complaints from parents were book banning and Moms for Liberty. Number one with a bullet if you combine them into the cause and effect that they are. So you've had a lot of feedback saying, "Those things, stop it," but we're not listening. What's the point of parents giving feedback if it just falls on the floor? Pay attention to that. Are you here for the parents and the students or a few censorious randos from around the state? I mean, we saw the list dropped off earlier, I think the censorious randos are certainly winning. Do better, please, dear God, do better.
All right. We have Amy Robb, Kelly Curvin, and our last speaker is Kate Delaney.
Hi, I'm Amy Robb. And so first of all, a little gaslighting going on there, Matt, with the head shaking when you're like, "Oh, no guns, we didn't even talk about..." So really what my ask is right now is, would this board entertain the idea of expanding the Guardian program? When we say put the Guardian program in Brevard County, does it mean a teacher now must carry a firearm? That is not what that means. It's 100%...
Do you recognize that? Do you say if they want to be a part of it? Is that Meghan? She said no teachers.
She did not say no teachers. Stop lying up there, you gaslighting piece of... Yeah. All right. Congrats, Meghan, for being the chair. This is great. Do not bring guns into the schools. Do not put more guns in our schools. Do not do that. Do not. I was going to also bring up the parent survey. What are you doing about that? It is a huge concern. Have you addressed it at all? Or are you just raising up their voices like they're the majority? You are doing things that are so unpopular and you do not care. We are the taxpayers. Listen. Keep laughing, Bangs. Why, what are more important, facts or... Why, what are more important, facts or fears? Why are you so scared of books? Why are you so scared of books and not guns? Because you just don't pay attention to the data, you're so, okay. Parental choice, parental choice, do not put guns in the schools. Now, again, Moms for Liberty, okay, they do not co-parent with the government, what is this? What, what do you call this? Do not co-parent with the government, what the hell is this? It's the government, and it's your, what is this? You are so.
Ms. Robb, can you please address the board?
Listen, my daughter turned 18 now, and she's still a student, so every student, where are the books for her in the fucking library?
Excuse me. She doesn't matter to you. I don't know how to pause this, sorry.
She doesn't matter to you.
Yeah.
Is she not a student?
Ms. Robb? Until you can learn decorum and how to speak respectfully.
Please, save it.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right. We have Kelly Curvin and Katie Delaney. And then we're done with public comment.
So many words, so many thoughts. I just want to shout out to the public on all sides. Matt, you tried really hard to get people to leave, and they didn't. And I just want to thank all of you for staying and letting your voice be heard. Dear Mr. Susan, during my time on the reconsideration committee, I have read 11 assigned books, researched them online, and conferred with media specialists in anticipation of, and in preparation for our discussions. I am very disappointed by the book reconsideration process as a whole, I recognize that, as part of this committee, we were tasked with removing inappropriate content from our libraries. However, it is important to understand that many sections that came before the committee should have remained on library shelves with restrictions if necessary under the law. BPS does serve students who are 18 years and older or gifted in mature reading. Readers maintaining the selections away from general audiences would have limited access to those with concerns, and provided access to those who had met criteria or had permission. I do not feel as if the committee members were provided adequate guidance by the school board of the evaluation criteria. To be provided via email, a number of Florida state statutes to review at leisure and then be expected to interpret and follow them, does not serve the process well. In addition, I feel the committee members may have participated with individual goals in mind and used the process as a platform to share their beliefs without intent to seek a compromise. Sadly, when individuals are unwilling to listen to one another, actually speak to make themselves heard rather than listen to one another, everyone loses. In this case, it is the students of Brevard County schools. Unfortunately, the direction of the current committee has taken the result entitled being removed from the library shelves for all students, and that was not the intent of the law. As such, I do not feel comfortable being part of a committee that allows this to happen. In the future, I hope the school board and reconsider, reconsideration committee will consider the needs of all students in their decision making. Warmest regards. This was the resignation letter of your book review committee member, who is the former ESE staffing specialist at Brevard Public Schools. I don't care about what you say is, isn't on the agenda. Jean's 298 book list that he wanted pre-banned also wasn't on the agenda. I looked through it. Rachel, the daughter of a Danish mother and a black GI, becomes the sole survivor of a family tragedy after a fateful morning on their Chicago rooftop. Forced to move to a new city with her strict African-American grandmother as her guardian, Rachel is thrust for the first time into a mostly black community, where her light brown skin, blue eyes, and beauty being a constant stream of attention her way. It's there as she grows up and tries to swallow her grief, then she becomes to understand how the mystery and tragedy of her mother might be connected to her own uncertain identity. This searing and heart-wrenching portrayal of a young biracial girl dealing with society's ideas of raising class is the winner of the Bellwether Prize for Best Fiction Manuscript Addressing Issues of Social Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Curvin. Thank you. Your, your three minutes are up, Ms. Curvin. Katie Delaney, you're the next speaker.
I wanted to mention something that Ms. Campbell said a couple weeks ago, about the legislature not intending for parents to get up here and read from the books. And I can tell you, as somebody who worked with the legislature on this bill, and who went to Tallahassee and lobbied for this bill, that was the intent. It was the intent, because school boards all around the state were refusing to get this inappropriate material out of the classrooms, and this was our final straw. And it gave the parents the power, where it belongs. You also mentioned today that all of this inappropriate behavior happens on both sides, and that's not the truth. We do not pop people's tires. We do not dox people. We do not have screws thrown on people's driveways. We don't do that. I had a school board member put a picture of my 11-year-old child on the news, while they were calling me a domestic terrorist. We don't do that. So how dare you? I do want to tell you that you guys broke policy tonight for a public comment, sign up. People weren't able to sign up prior to public comment, and I, I know you didn't do that on purpose, but that's something that the staff needs to know about. And I do want to say that tonight, right now, there are books in our libraries that violate state statute. And right now, today, you all can be sued for every individual book that's in the library that breaks statute. This was, and now you're forcing parents to read these disgusting vile things at this I want to say one more thing about us not being the majority. If we weren't the majority, we wouldn't have the board we have today. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Delaney. I'm going to call for a short recess, if that's all, just so we have a moment to go to the restroom. 10 minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes, what do you want? Five-minute recess, all right.
All right, welcome back. We are now moving into the consent agenda portion of the meeting. Dr. Rindell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. There are 26 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rindell. Does any board member wish to pull any of the items? Hearing none. All right, I will entertain a motion to-
Move to approve.
Oh, wow, all right, we're going. All right.
Our friends all left.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, passes five to zero. All right. Hey, look, we have a break taken in here, but we already took our break, so we're back in session. All right. All right, Dr. Rindell, will you please let us know about the items under the action portion of today's agenda?
Thank you, ma'am chair. The first item is G43 FSBA FAD's annual joint conference travel request for Mr. Susan.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Next item is G44 proposed, oh, we did that.
Yep, we did that.
We did that.
Yep.
The next item is G46 Board Policy 2417 Comprehensive Health Education.
Public hearing.
This is-
Yeah, public hearing. You got put under the wrong one.
It's under the wrong one. Okay, so-
Never mind.
Do we even have a public hearing section in this? I don't think the-
Yeah, there is, but it's all right.
Should we do this one later?
Yeah, no, yeah, we're good.
I think four of them are.
Yeah, the next four, we're good. We just gotta have a public hearing, so it goes open.
Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight.
Just want to notice it now. Anybody who wishes to speak to this item, anybody who wishes to speak to this item.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So am I okay to jump out of order now and do those and then-
Yeah, do.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item?
Nope.
This would be-
Item forty-six, Policy 2417 Comprehensive Health Education.
Yeah, it's out of order. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, any discussion? No discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five to zero. All right, we are on.
Next item would be G47 Board Policy 2520 Selection and Adoption of Instructional Materials.
All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? Mr. Ross, all right.
He legit can speak to this item.
All right.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a public comment. Tonight I want to speak to agenda items, G48 and 49. I have issues with this policy, but to understand those issues must understand how we got here and what drove the proposed changes to the policy. October and November of 2022, the Book Reconsideration Committee reviews two challenged books and decides to place them behind the counter for checkout with parental approval, a compromise that most on the left and the right seem to contend with. December 13th, 2022, school board meeting. With extremists now having multiple seats on the Brevard School Board and having fired Superintendent Mullin at the first school board meeting in November, Mr. Trent asked for book review process to be explained to the board. Dr. Sullivan provided an overview of the committee's makeup. Four media specialists and five handpicked members, one from each school board member. Mr. Trent floated revising the board policy to update the committee's voting numbers and the speed of review. School board sessions in January and March of 2023. Dr. Klein relayed to the board the changes to the book ban policy that were requested. Mr. Trent asked for clarification whether the books are being removed as soon as they are formally challenged. This was confirmed by Dr. Klein, and Mr. Trent, your reply was perfect. The school board also removed media specialists and school faculty from the committee. Curiously, in January of 2023, the very same person who had asked that close to 40 books be banned in BPS schools mysteriously withdraws her challenges. Has this person who claimed that they knew what they should read because they had six kids suddenly decided that the books were okay? Or did she know something everyone else did not? April 2023, the board passes a new policy against the wishes of numerous media specialists who came and spoke at the school board meeting. Immediately, Jean Trent and Megan Wright appoint two of the more vocal book banners to the committee, one of whom was the very book banner who had withdrawn her complaint. June 2nd, 23, book ban success. The new committee meets and immediately bans three books for eight years from BPS schools. No in-depth discussion from two of the committee members, but that is a feature of the committee, not a bug, right? During public comment, the public points out the many flaws in the committee members' thinking, to little avail. June 6th, 2023, school board meeting. Jean and Megan are upset that their chosen ones were called out during the public comment at the book ban committee meeting. "We can't have that," they screamed. "Let's get the police involved and let's ban certain people from speaking." Gotta love the First Amendment, huh? The new policy that we're at nowadays requires no public comment at book review. The book ban committee only has one parent on it, only has to have one parent on it, and the board makes the final decision. How convenient. Can you say lawsuit?
Thank you. All right. Sorry. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board regarding this policy?
Yes.
Ms. Carvin, okay.
I also would like to speak to G48 and 49 together, and I'll keep this very brief. If you're going to ban the books that our students need and should have access to, then you should have to read them yourselves. I think it is a complete scapegoat to have a committee and ask them to read it, ask that their vote not actually matter, and then what happens if they vote one way but you feel a different way? What was the point? If the vote stops here, then do your job. Read the books. I mean, you just earlier today banned most of the lists, so a lot of the lists you won't even have to read. Read, you didn't ban, that didn't pass? Okay, then we misunderstood that. Thank you for clarifying that. So that's 42 books, two of them are children's books, 41 books. I mean, they're not that long. I just reread the first book that you were supposed to meet on, on December 1st. It took me all of a day. If you guys are gonna be the deciding factor, if you guys are gonna be the one to listen to the public comment, then you should be reading the material. You should know what's in the books and not just a page here or there. Part of our laws, part of the law at the level of the Supreme Court states that it, the whole work matters. Sex by itself is not pornography, no matter how many times people try to convince the world otherwise. And another thing that this policy doesn't address, the state put in a loophole where residents have the ability to challenge your decision, and you then have to pay for that decision. I'm just saying, you witnessed today the passion behind books in this community. There are people that are going to challenge every single book you try to ban. Think about that. Do your job, read them yourselves, and then make the decisions. There's no point of having a committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone here who wishes to address this policy? Anybody else? No? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I won't, I won't take a long time because I've addressed this every time we've revised this. We will have a policy because we're required to and we need to. We have, the state law requires, it says that the board determines what instructional materials are in our schools, and that goes from textbooks all the way down to the media center books and now into the classroom libraries. And so we have the responsibility and the authority to make that decision. It's not a group, and I know people left, but I'm assuming some of them are still listening or will go back and listen. It's not any group in the community. It is this board. This board makes the decision, and this board has taken the decision back from our group that we are gonna ask to make a recommendation. That we have selected them because of their willingness and their, and their level of expertise, even if it's just being apparent. But I, I've actually been very impressed with the committee meetings. I think everybody participated. Everybody had read, read the book thoroughly. They may not agree with each other. Clearly, they didn't in many cases, but they did a good job. I think we're doing a good job here, but I did wanna thank Ms. Carvin for bringing up one thing, and that is to deal with the magistrate, because I think that's where we, actually, the thing with the magistrate, it brings up to our conversation we had earlier tonight, because it's my understanding that you can't just, if you don't like the decision that was made, bring up, you know, bring it to the magistrate. The, what the magistrate is looking at is, did we follow the policy? That's correct, Mr. Gibbs, right?
Yes, the DOE has issued memos on that too, saying that the magistrate is there to determine whether the district has followed its policies.
Right, so when we talk about lists that we might do, just add, you know, all at once, that's not, that's, that would open us up to a challenge because we wouldn't have followed our policy. So this is a good policy, except for, I'm gonna make the one caveat, we did make that change about the 100 days, a minimum of 100 days, but it needs to be the other way around, 100 pages per day. So I, we're gonna adopt it as is and move forward, but I do want us board to go back and fix that, and Dr. Rindell, you're already aware, so we can switch that to what we intended, which was no slower than 100 pages per week. So, thanks.
All right. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Nope, all right, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, we already did.
Already done.
Sorry, all right, I apologize. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we are on to, my number's messed up on my-
Yeah, the next item, yeah, the script is off from the actual agenda.
Just don't say the number.
I know, I know.
Next item is Board Policy 2521 Instructional Materials Program, G48.
Do I hear a motion? Oh, sorry, does anybody wish to speak to this policy? Does anybody wish to speak to this policy? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Nope, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any that are opposed? Nope, okay. Five to zero, all right, and-
So the next item is G49 Board Policy 5460 Graduation Requirements.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Hey, that was one too long.
All right.
So the next item is G50 Department School Initiated Agreements.
This one is not falling under-
It's under procurement and distribution services.
So I don't need to ask if anyone needs to speak to this. Okay, just making sure.
Back contract.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
The last item is G51 Procurement Solicitations. This one does not need a public hearing as well.
Okay, wonderful. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes five to zero. All right. We are gonna move on to the information agenda, which includes items for the board review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items today. There are 20 items under this category. Does any member wish to discuss these items? Don't everybody all jump out at once? No? Hearing none, we will move on. All right, we are now at the board member reports and discussion points.
I have one report and one discussion.
All right, wonderful. So Ms. Campbell, do you wanna go ahead and give us whichever order you prefer?
So as our representative on the FSBA Advocacy Committee, I am also on the legislative subcommittee meeting, and we had a meeting last week about the deregulation work that the legislature is gonna do this year. And those bills, three bills dropped yesterday. I know Ms. Lysinski already sent them out. I was, I was gonna, she beat me to it. I was gonna send them out to staff because they have asked us to send it to our superintendents and to the staff to get their feedback on all that deregulation. There's some really good stuff. It's just like little minutia that over the years, it's kinda like those things in your house that you just keep piling up, piling up, piling up. You never get rid of the old stuff, so what they're trying to do is really clear out some of that old stuff that's irrelevant or is difficult. It's just paperwork and bureaucracy that our school districts have to deal with. So, the reason why I bring that up is there was a feeling, they said they were getting from the senators in particular, because they're the ones leading the charge, that, you know, where is everybody? They're not hearing from everybody. So the request was twofold. One, ask our staff to take a look and give feedback, and then to give that feedback to two different people. One, to send it back to FSBA so they can kind of sort it all together, but also to send it to our legislative delegation and say, "This is really important work. We support this work. This is, this is how it will really help us." And so I'll be asking, I'm gonna ask Dr. Rindell if you could have the staff take kind of take a look at those items and, and give that feedback back to us, and I'll be happy to share it with FSBA side, but if we could also send it to our legislative delegation, I think that would be fantastic. I was pleasantly surprised, the DOE had a short, short list, but when the Senate Committee for Education, when they started listing some of the things that they were, it was like, wow, this, it's pretty, it's pretty comprehensive. Now, the House may not have the same, that same level of plans, so we'll see. They'll, they'll have to all hash it all out. But we definitely wanna let them know, hey, this is, this is really a burden on us. This would make life easier. This makes more sense. They're not gonna get rid of accountability. We don't want that.
Right.
But just some of the little ticky tack things that don't make a difference in, in the world that are just leftover from old, old regulations would be great. So want that. That was something that they asked us to do.
Can I follow on that?
Yeah.
Ms. Campbell, just so everybody knows, it would behoove us to be very strong in support of the Senate right now because both the DOE and the House are kinda lagging. And so if we are gonna come out and honor our teachers and honor our staff, it's time to rally. So I'm going to Tallahassee probably almost every week until this thing's done. I'm gonna be, after Thanksgiving, I'm gonna get very involved into some of the process. They're asking us to come to committees. They're asking us to be a part of this. This is almost in line with what the union was saying and some of the other stuff is, is that there's these things that are sitting there. This is our big opportunity to do it, and the Senate's leading the charge, so thank you so much for what you, you're saying here. And I think we should get up there and rally and go.
So the message they wanted to just get out was that we want, we wanna let them know that dereg is important.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can I add to that as well? I, I think it would be wise for BPS specifically to look at what things have we implemented that maybe aren't regulated through the state, that we might be doing, that we could possibly do a little deregging here in-house ourselves to make life a little easier for our staff, so our teachers, just a little tidbit to throw out there.
They're still, they're still taking input. There were deadlines in the summer, but what I'm maybe told all over is, not only the DOE is still taking input, but especially the Senate and the House, they're, they're really still taking input. So anything we wanna give, and I know we didn't put dereg items particularly on our platform, but now that we have some ideas, and now that we've got those three bills, we really wanna give them some feedback on that.
Do you envision us collaborating together to have a list that we all then go?
No, what I was, I think if the staff can take those three bills and just kinda go through them, because it lists, hey, we're talking about striking this, striking this, and just kinda give each department, kinda say, hey, this would make our life easier, and, or this costs us this much time and this much money every year. Just kinda do a quick announce. It needs to be short, but, you know, just so we can kinda get behind it and we can send that back to them so they've got really an idea, because most of them don't have any idea of what the manpower and the financial responsibility for some of these reports that are, you know, as the DOE said in some of those reports, we already have that information other ways. We're wasting people's time to do the same information in, in this particular way, right?
Ms. Campbell, one of the things when we passed the All American Flag Act is it failed for three years. And then when it passed, we sent lists of signatures. What I would like to do, and this is maybe not right now, but send the Senate a support, you know what I mean, of all the things that they're writing, and then we all sign it. Say, we are in support of you. We're behind you. You know what I mean?
We're, we, we can still, we can still do that. They asked for the feedback by December 1st, so I don't know if we can get it that fast.
We just get the list.
Because we won't be together again until that.
And have all of our senior staff sign it and everything, and just say, we are behind this, because they need support.
But as they move forward, I think by the time we have our next board meeting in December, I mean, we can, we'll, they'll have some more committee weeks. It'll be fleshed out a bit more. The House hasn't taken up their, they were supposed to present theirs this week. I don't remember when the meeting was, Thursday, I think. Okay, so that was my board report. A discussion item, you know, you guys have served with me on the board long enough to know that, you know, misinformation is just one of the things that I get very frustrated about. So we, we've had the conversation, so many people came to speak to us tonight regarding the Guardian program. And I recognize that what I'm about to say may, may for some people not change their minds at all. But as I've had, started to have conversations, as we all should be having conversations with our community members, with our staff, with our administrators, you know, I'm even hearing from people who work for us, a misunderstanding of what it would be, and I heard it several times tonight. So we, you know, the, the number one thing that people said in regards to the Guardian program was, you know, not arming teachers, not arming teachers. And we've, we've had the conversation, yes, in Florida, you can do that now, and like the original Guardian program that happened in 2018, but our teacher contract, we had that conversation already, our teacher contract doesn't allow that, and that would have to be negotiated. However, I just have to dispel this myth that is the idea of whoever wants to can just start caring, or anybody with a concealed carry license can be a guardian. I spoke to one of our staff members last week. They said, well, I'm concerned because whoever wants to can bring a gun in camp. That, that is not what we're talking about. Our security specialist, somebody listed off the amount of training that SROs go through. Our security specialists, who are guardians, go through 176 hours of training, which is more than the 144 that the state requires. 176 hours of training. They have to do yearly re-ups, training, and all those things. Active shooter, how to hold on to your weapon, and, and listen, I'm not saying this, where this is gonna go. We don't know where this is gonna go, but I just wanna miss, dispel the misinformation. They would have to go through all that training. This board decided, a previous rendition of this board decided, when we brought those security specialists on, and this predates me, I think I told you guys about that, that they would only recruit security specialists who had military law enforcement or security backgrounds. This board could do the same thing for the, what we'll call undercover guardians. We could do that if we decided to go that way. But the training is not only a good idea, it's required. The 176 is more than what the state requires, but that's what our sheriff has said, and the sheriff is in charge. So we're not just talking about random person who wants to be one of these people. I already had someone say, I would, I would do it. I'm like, you're not qualified. So just, I just wanna dispel that information. Again, that may not make everybody feel better, but I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page of the facts of what could, what it could like, look like if the board decides to go that way. Because we gotta start from that position of facts and truth and information, whatever conversation we may go, because all of, everything else is just inflammatory. You're just gonna arm teachers. You're just letting whoever, teachers need to be, they don't need, I'm like, first of all, even if we let teachers do, it would have to be someone who, one, was qualified, and, and two, they, they would have to volunteer, and three, they have to go through the training, and then have to pass all the tests, and the mental health things, and all that stuff. So it's just not the inflammatory rhetoric that's going around. There was one other thing, but it, my, it went right out of my very tired brain, so I will stop right there.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I appreciate your clarification on it. There is a lot of misinformation. The intention for me, when I brought this forward to, to expand this out, was not to arm teachers. That was not the goal. I do believe that a good guy with a gun stops a bad guy with a gun, and I'll say that all day long, and I, I won't back down from that. It's one of the reasons I'm, I appreciate our sheriffs so much. Thank you guys that are in this room, keeping us safe right now. So with that being said, I, I am not supporting arming teachers. That is not what I said when I said we wanna have this discussion about expanding the Guardian program. In a perfect world, we could hire security specialists. The Guardian aspect of the- The guardian aspect of things, actually, in a perfect world, we could hire all SROs, you know, in a perfect world. That would be, if we had, if we had no, no limitation on, that would be the perfect world. The guardian aspect brings in an element of, our security specialists and our SROs are very identifiable. You know who they are right away. So, if somebody were gonna come in with ill intentions to harm our students, they know who their threat is that potentially could take them out, so to speak. A guardian is an element of surprise, and that's why they have them. So, I, I advocate for them. I don't think that that is a bad idea. Looking at it five and a half years since when it first came out, I know all the controversy that was there, so thank you for clearing that up. I really appreciate you doing that. Do any of my other board members have any other discussion?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Susan.
So, I had the awesome opportunity to meet one of our sponsors for the Florida, or Future Educators Program, right? So, there's clubs out there where we have in middle school, high school, these students wanna be educators, and we have two programs, one at Bayside, one at Space Coast, that we actually have, you know what I mean, where they're in that. I was floored because she said, "You know, I'd really love to take my kids to go shadow, you know, they all wanna be kinda teachers. We can go shadow one of the elementary schools." And she said she's reached out and done all that stuff. So, I called the school that she was trying to reach out to, and the teacher, the principal said, "Absolutely, like, we would love to have them over there." It was just a miscommunication. So, I, I wanted to say, like, when, in 2008, I was part of the team that put together the curriculum, built the whole program, and was part of the initial Florida educators program, right? Go to competitions and all that stuff. I'm gonna try to make a concerted effort to build up all those clubs and to do all that stuff and try to get them coordinated, that's all. I think it helps us because when we started in 2008, I think you, Ms. Wright, you've seen it, a lot of the kids that were in that are now teachers that are my former students. And I see them everywhere. I walk into them, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, you're there." And they were there. They were, it's that 2008. So, it does work, and it, we can produce that, but we've gotta catch them at a younger age. We talked about catching them at a younger age, like, them signing up in high school is great, but in getting touched into it in middle school, those kids love to go back there. So, I'm just gonna kinda let you guys know, I'm gonna go into that area and kinda push into it and stuff like that, and it'd be cool if we could all, you know what I mean, kinda promote it at the schools and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing is, is that, Mr. Bruin, I was wondering if, so, community, because government is under your wing, right? And don't we have, like, access to lobby tools and all that other stuff?[1579.38]